Yeah, let me send my... Something to work on.
Do I have to do that?
There's some discussion.
Ready and drew. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the February twenty-four, two thousand fourteen Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to remind everybody to please turn your cell phones to off or silent. And if anybody needs a listening device, please check with staff. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Honcho.
Here.
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 Bunch.
Bunch.
Noble.
Here.
Autry.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Okay. We have several items on consent this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes from the February tenth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Second is vacation, fourteen dash forty-six seventeen for eleven forty-four North Futral. The next is a vacation, fourteen dash forty-six twenty-one for Beechwood and the railroad crossing. The fourth is vacation, fourteen dash forty-six twenty-three for South School parking deck. Let's see. The fifth is a preliminary plat, fourteen dash forty-six sixteen for Salem Road and for Semin. And last is an administrative item, fourteen dash forty-six fifty, the Parkland education. If any member of the public is here to speak to the, any of these items or need them removed for discussion, go ahead and bring them up. And any of the commissioners, would anybody like any of these items removed for discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cook.
I'll make a motion for approved. Is that an agenda?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Cook and a second from Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Honcho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, Hoskins did the contested agenda. Got a yes from Hoskins.
Okay. The first item of old business is a large-scale development, thirteen dash forty-five sixty-eight for come and go. This applicant has asked for this item to be tabled until the March tenth meeting. If there's any member of the public here to speak to this item, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I move that we table LSD thirteen dash four-five-six-eight until the March tenth meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion from Commissioner Chesser and a second from Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Honcho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The first item of new business is a rezone, fourteen dash forty-six eighteen for Paddock Lane and Happy Hollow. Let's see. Mr. Foulter, could you give us a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for property just under ten acres, actually known as the Paddock Lane Plant, Paddock Lane Plan Zoning District that was approved by the City Council.
I'll bet the studio will fix that. I hope. Otherwise, we're adjourned.
They told me last time to move the microphone closer, so I'm saying that. This was approved in two thousand six. It was for the development of thirty-three single-family units and twenty-five multifamily units, so it was a combination of planning areas. This was also in the time when the hillside Hilltop overlay district was being written. So there's actually quite confusing, complicated set of rules for tree preservation because it was a combination of what was being written and what they were proposing to try to follow those regulations. And as we looked at it down the road, we've realized it would be much simpler if we'd have supplied the existing regulations on the books. I'll get to that as well. The subdivision was completed and they received final plat approval in two thousand ten. At this point, though, nothing has been constructed on the property. We're kind of sitting vacant for the last few years. Someone is interested in developing the property. Their preference would be to develop a single-family homes to remove some of the attached units. In our opinion, that will likely increase tree preservation on the property in some of the areas where they would have a townhouse-style development. It would likely require the entire area to be graded. Having detached units will hopefully reduce the amount of grading needed for development on the site. The overall density is going to be very similar to the original plan zoning district. I think it was about five point nine one units per acre is what the allowance was into the PZD under RSFA. You're probably looking in the five to six units per acre range. So it'll be a consistent density. It'll just be detached units only. Again, we think it'll allow better tree preservation, easier grading of the site in many locations, and still provide an appropriate transition between kind of higher density, the Cliffs Apartments is to the north and east of this property. There's a mixture of two-family and single-family to the east of this across the street. And then heading up the hill, as you really get into the hillside, it transitions purely into single-family. So we think from a land use perspective, this is appropriate. It's also consistent with the future land use map for a residential neighborhood area, which encourages a variety of residential densities. So all in all, we think that this is an appropriate change in zoning, and it would take it to a standard zoning district under our zoning code and allow the applicant to develop the site under the current Hillside Overlay District regulations. It would be much more straightforward for permitting and for construction. We recommended this be forwarded to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Is the applicant available?
Yeah. I was going to, I was going to, and I thought about maybe changing this. I may want to just have you get your feelings on it and then table it because I came up with some, maybe some other product that I'd used keeping some of it. And Happy Hollow, it's a double street. It doesn't show, yeah, it does show the layout. Some of that there, I may, I don't know if a pointer, where it says Happy Hollow in the very first street, that is a double-sided, and that was, had some townhouses there. And we, and it's flat at one section. We may want to keep that one section, so I don't know, maybe kind of a hybrid, leave, I don't know if we leave the PZD and then just rezone and have the rest of it be a single-family.
So you're asking really to get this tabled so you can get your proposal the way you really want it?
Yeah, I think I'm going to table it, but I'd like, if, now that I'm right here, I'd like to kind of get what, what the board kind of looks at it, if I could get any feedback from anybody, if you like it, don't like it, you know?
Okay. And I didn't catch your name.
My name is Bart Bauer.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we can discuss it. That's fine.
Yeah, and then table'd be fine because I'd like to know if I'm going uphill against the, you know, maybe, or if, I know it's kind of an odd project because the streets and everything, we're already in here, and it was RZPZD the way it was set up.
Okay. That's, I, I didn't have any problem with the, with the layout that you had presented. We'll listen to the other commissioners and take public comment. And if we have any other questions, we'll bring you back up.
Okay. Yeah, so I'd like to know if the neighbors have any problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew.
If, if he, if the applicant wants this tabled, we'll, we'll just discuss it and then we'll just ta, make a motion to table after the fact. Is that...
Right. I think he's requested some feedback on potentially leaving some of the multifamily or two-family units, townhomes, right at Happy Hollow. And then maybe the commissioners have any opinion on that. Let him know and then table it.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood the protocol. Okay. Is, is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
A question for staff. I guess the PZD hasn't expired, even though it's been some time?
That's correct. It's still a valid PZD.
Okay. It's, I'm okay with the rezone. It's hard for me to say how I'm going to feel about a mix without seeing what that is. So for me, I just need to, I have no problem tabling it. My only comment is that until I see what you're proposing, it's real hard for me to give any, to give any feedback. And with that, I'll yield the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I, I like the idea of having a little higher density there along Happy Hollow. I think it's appropriate, and I'd be in support of that sort of direction.
Could we ask him a question about what his plan is, a little bit in more detail? Would you, would your density go up overall for your development if you, so you're still at, would be at the same basic density that you have, is just more along Happy Hollow?
No. I would reduce density. Happy Hollow has townhouses, and then if you can see to the north, there's an alley and there are going to be townhouses there. I was going to turn those into lots. So I'd only leave the townhouses the buffer between Happy Hollow, I don't know if you can show where the hand is, and then coming south, just that section there, which is right now for townhouses, I would leave them as townhouses. And the original project in the PZD had floor plans and looks that I don't like. I would go to a more eclectic, a different look in the PZ, within the PZD. But I would have it, the density would come down. All the other lots would remain the same as they are within the PZD. At the north section, where there was going to be some more townhouses, I was going to eliminate those and only leave the townhouses at a butt Happy Hollow, kind of use that as a buffer for the site here. So density would go down quite a bit.
Okay. So it sounds like a pretty major overhaul somewhat.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's that much because, like I say, if I just, if I leave the lots as they are, and I did where it's going to be multi, multifamily and just let, turn those into lots, what I was going to do in the PZD is eliminate, just keep on eliminate like a center lot line, then leave it how it's currently platted, but put a unit in the center. And then the multifamily, it'd have a, it'd have a different look, but that's about it. The elevations with the floor plans and stuff would have a little different look. But I could be speaking on turf with the planners. They didn't seem to think that was as much an issue is, would be if I'm keeping what the intent of the PZD was, and I would be keeping that. In fact, I'd be lowering the density a little bit and staying within the frame of the PZD.
Okay. Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Actually, I do have a couple more comments now. Just, so the lots that front Happy Hollow would, they're double-frontage lots?
Yeah, but what...
And which way are they facing?
The, the home would face into the site. The back end would be, yeah. And that was written in the PZD, they had to be that way, too.
Sure. So then I have a question for staff, which is, how do we, is this affected by our new double-frontage, or is it sort of grandfathered in?
It's, it's already platted. These are already public streets. The city's accepted, so they're simply at that point.
Okay. So it's just build out. That's not a problem. And then, what was my other question? So the area, in staff's opinion, the area where he's talking about doing townhouses, is that a place where, sorry, I guess I should develop, add, point my comments at Jesse. Is that an area, in your opinion, that would, it doesn't look like there are a lot of trees there. There's one section of trees. Do you think that that would be good, bad? Do you have an opinion on that, Mr. Foulter?
How about I say that the PZD that exists right now allows...
Allows it.
Allows it right now, so it's keeping that.
Okay. And then my last question is, I'm assuming that this isn't a problem, but given our, what we're going to vote on tonight regarding PZDs, I guess that's not going to matter because this is a PZD that's already in place. And you're, we wouldn't be making a change to the existing PZD. We might be rezoning part of it into something else.
Yeah, you'd be removing some of the area from the PZD, but the, otherwise, the PZD would exist as it's already been approved.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clear up. Thank you. And given that, if there are no more comments, I'd be happy to move to table. Mr. Chair, I move to table RZN fourteen dash four-six-one-eight until two weeks?
I, yeah, I think two weeks would be fine.
Until the next regular, regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Chesser and a second from Commissioner Winston. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Honcho.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, I'm up for the second one, too. You want me to stay here? This is mine also.
Okay. Okay. The next item up is a rezone, fourteen dash forty-six nineteen for sixty-three fifty, Sellers Road Windsor. Mr. Thompson, could you give us a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject property contains approximately just under thirty-five acres and is located at the northeast corner of Devil Springs Road and Sellers Road, right on the very edge of the city. It's currently zoned RSF-two. The property has a long history of development and failed development. It was, was under construction for a twenty-eight lot subdivision within the city of Farmington Planning Area. This was in the mid-two thousands. The, the development did not occur, only parts of it did. Some infrastructure was put in, curb, gutter, storm drain, water lines, some gravel base. The, again, the construction ended, and approximately a year later, the land was annexed into the city of Fayetteville by vote. The surrounding property, as you can see in your zoning maps, is RA, residential agricultural, RSF-one, extremely low-density zoning. And the policies of Farmington also would be similar. Their zoning would limit, limit density. You can see just on the other side of the, of the city line there. The request tonight is to rezone this property from RSF-two to RSF-four, residential single-family, four units per acre. Staff has not received any public comment. As you can see from the history of requests on this property for rezoning, there are quite a few that the city Planning Commission has been pretty consistent in indicating that RSF-four is an inappropriate zoning district in this area. And, and that just keeps coming back to us. The site has minimal infrastructure, probably inadequate water, has no sewer to it at this point. The streets are inadequate and would require some improvement. The big pieces are the, the city plan twenty-thirty future land use map, which designates this site as rural residential and natural areas. And rural residential recognize existing low-density housing, really large lot development, and are, are identified and to encourage conservation and preservation of woodlands, grasslands, agricultural lands, everything being sparsely settled. And the natural area is also consisting of land that may even revert to a wilderness condition over time. The proposed zoning here, RSF-four, is, staff finds, not compatible at all with adjacent, nearby agricultural and rural residential uses. Again, the city plan designates this as rural residential. This proposed density tonight at RSF-four is inconsistent with the land use map and with existing density that's there currently on surrounding properties. This would create a, if this were approved, a spot zoning situation where we would have one island of RSF-four far on the edge of, of the city. In fact, Jesse might, Jesse might pass this around. You can see the yellow line is our city boundary. This is a lot of, a lot of green space and undeveloped property between the city and this, and this particular piece. So rezoning this property to RSF-four, directly adjacent to property zoned RSF-one and right there with the city of Farmington, does not promote a pattern desired by the city planning office on, on the periphery or by the city in this rural area. Staff's finding that the zoning request is therefore inconsistent with our planning use, land objectives, and principles and policies. Additionally, staff finds that the proposed zoning is not justified at this time. The proposed zoning would result, again, in that isolated area, which we prefer not to do, surrounded by large areas of rural residential and agricultural uses. So staff is recommending denial of the rezoning to RSF-four for these reasons. You know, finding that this is a sensitive environmental area. It's directly adjacent, for instance, to Goose Creek, and that it would exacerbate condition of suburban sprawl, leapfrog development in an area with load of insufficient infrastructure. For those reasons, as I said, we're recommending denial of this rezone request tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Newman, did, did you guys have anything to add with this development or proposal?
Just, Mr. Thompson asked us to be present to discuss the off-site sewer, if necessary. I've talked to our utilities engineer, Shannon Jones, and there's a couple of options available. I know there's not sewer available to the site right now. When it was originally proposed, they were, Quinn indicated not sitting, had a different system design. The, the city will be looking at the two options, but we'll be recommending trying to have gravity flow to the southwest, to the existing, near the existing pump station. You can see red dots, that orange line going through it. The other option is that orange dot, which is a sewer pump station north of the site that currently is not designed to handle that, that location. The, the option would be to go gravity to southwest or put a new pump station on their parcel and eliminate the, and go force lane back up north to Legacy Project, and then ultimately try to abandon the sewer lift station. We'd be looking at determining what the applicant had, had an opportunity to talk with the applicant on the project, just kind of pull some information together, but look at the costs associated, meet the specifications for a pump station, costs associated with the other option, and look at the long-term maintenance, and try to work the route to the southwest. Easements are there already. City's provided easements along where the force lane's shown, the red line, along the creek basin. So just, just a little bit of information. There's definitely not sewer. There's definitely an expense that'll be incurred. City strongly discourages lift stations because there's perpetual maintenance. City has to perform on those. And so we just have to kind of see what the applicant's direction is, see if we've worked something. Can't speak for the utilities department or the city council, but if they do go to the south, we would investigate possibly upsizing the line, toll sharing for a larger diameter line than what they'd be required. Eight inch would be the minimum they would need, and the utility department indicated they'd like something larger than that for other developments, so we'd be going in that direction if that was chosen.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I'm sure we'll have a few. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Garner, I know it agenda. I know everybody wasn't there this week. As far as the considerations for this project, would you mind just kind of reviewing that with everybody just quickly, just to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as considerations go?
When, when a planning commission's looking at a zoning decision, they really should, the primary consideration are, is the zoning appropriate? And, you know, as Mr. Thompson discussed, that's based on different things, the existing surrounding land uses, would the zoning being proposed, is that compatible with the surrounding land uses? That's your primary consideration for the commission to look at. And one of the secondary things probably is the future land use plan. What has the city council designated this area and ultimate build out? And those are probably two primary things for discussion for a rezone.
Okay. Thanks.
And of course, you can also consider, is the city infrastructure up to a project like this, or will it cause a strange or death, dangerous traffic situation or some other problems with the city infrastructure to be able to serve this particular proposed development?
Okay.
Or not proposed development, proposed zoning that would, in fact, increase density on this particular portion.
Okay.
I think, too, one of the, the other factors as well is that when, you know, when the city looks at a zoning decision, we do look at the water, sewer, public infrastructure, streets, and the impact of the zoning to that infrastructure. So in, in that regard, you can certainly look at the infrastructure, but we didn't want to, you know, one of the, the issue with sewer service being a long way away should not, is not justification to rezone a property. The cost of utility being very expensive for them to have to bring sewer service to this property should not influence the zoning decision. The primary factor should be the compatibility and the future land use plan map.
Okay. And that's the information I want to make sure everybody got. Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant available? If you could, please state your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Buckley Blue. I'm, I own Blue and Associates Engineering Land Surveying. We're the engineer of record for this.
Okay. Did you have anything to add, or...
I, I sure do. And by no means with any of this, I understand it's been proposed to city staff before, in front of you guys, I believe, back in oh-seven, and it still sits here today in the same shape it did then. So we're not looking, and it, this could be an issue with, with the way we presented this, too. It was our understanding that since we're keeping the site totally residential, an RPZD or PZD for this area wouldn't be the, the zoning that staff would have preferred. However, since the majority of the infrastructure of the roads are in, we're limited on how we can split the land up to make the project work with the expense of bringing the sewer. And I understand that's not the consideration here tonight, but in a way it is. For seven years now, this, this site, it's at least set here in this condition without being able to move forward. The actual density we're looking for is two and a quarter units per acre. We have a proposed seventy-nine lot subdivision to go with this. So that's what we're, that's what we're, we're looking to get to, and I understand that RSF-four puts a larger number out there that's going to be capable. With that, we're, it's going to be seventy-five foot-wide lots. The hundred-foot wide lots that are required by RSF-two does not work. I believe the last proposed subdivision had twenty-eight lots, and that, we can't get the amount of money to provide for the infrastructure that's going to be required. About Goose Creek, what we have now, you have infrastructure that is built with existing storm that's dumping directly into Goose Creek without detention. So the way it's been sitting there now for seven, actually, I believe it was built in the end of oh-five, the, the impact on Goose Creek is now more negative than it will be after we're done with the development. Whatever we do now has to go through city engineering, has to meet all the current subdivision regulations, what to detain and size a pond, will, will control the amount of water that's released into Goose Creek. It can't do anything but improve what is there. So I understand the concern of Goose Creek, since it is there, but we're only going to be making it a better situation. We have pipes that are dumping directly into Goose Creek now. So if the city's truly concerned about this, this is a means to have the developer fix that issue. We're also going to be bringing sewer to a corner of Fayetteville that doesn't have it. We've asked if we could go forward with the septic system, that the subdivision was designed, I believe, what, nine years ago for? And we were told no by Dave Jurgens at the time, that since it was inside the city of Fayetteville and it's underneath the shadow of the new wastewater treatment plant, the septic system would not even be considered. And I, and we understand that. But to get down to brass tacks on the deal, you cannot, it's the same issue the last people who brought it in front of you have that we have now. You cannot pay for the infrastructure with twenty-eight lots. It's just, it's not, it's not possible. roads and gravel, everything dumping into Goose Creek that hits the ground, would not be detained until this site's developed. After talking with the client, and we would be willing to bring forward, and this again is my fault for not having this ready prior to submitting this, but we'd be willing to do a bill of assurance to limit the number of lots to 79 lots on this track. We need the RSF4 to allow a narrower lot to be 75 foot of road frontage, they're going to be about 180 feet deep. But they fit the existing infrastructure that's there without tearing up the road. The bank's in a real situation because they cannot sell this 34 and a half acres as farmland. It's not safe as farmland. You have storm boxes without tops on it. You have road. It would, it would cost $300,000 or $400,000 just to have somebody go out there and try to clean this up, to get it back to what it was. I mean, it's definitely an eyesore to the city of Fayetteville. I understand RSF4 may be too much, but R2 is too small. And we, we do not have an in-between, we don't have an RSF3. We need the RSF4 for the road frontage requirement. We're willing to give a bill of assurance to limit to 79 lots. Our proposal would be to meet with engineering, and we've considered both options for sewer. Initially, we were going with option number two to put the lift station and put it in the force main going north, but we would obviously consider both and work with staff. But that's what we have in front of us. It's just, it's not as clear as just cut and dry, RSF4 doesn't work, because RSF4 is never going to work there if those are the considerations, and you're still going to have this in another eight years. So, that's our stance, and we understand you have a hard decision in front of you, but we can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
I should note that really the planning commission can't consider a bill of assurance until one has actually been physically presented to them. There are forms in the planning department-
Sure.
-that can be filled out with whatever conditions you wish to place on them, and then they can consider it, and the city council can consider it in a rezoning request.
And it was my understanding that that may be the case, and it may be better for us to table the project tonight, but we understood that we put out public notice and we wanted to be able to voice our concern. So, we'll probably end up just coming right back with, with this consideration, with the bill of assurance attached to it, so.
Okay. Yeah, if we have any questions, we'll bring you in.
Okay.
Looks like a member of the public is here to comment.
Yes, sir.
Could please state your name.
Yeah, my name is Mark Osman, and I live at 668 Foster Lane in Fayetteville. And this property we're talking about now is, we drive by it every day, and I saw the posting out there for the public hearing, and I tried to find out everything I could, which wasn't a whole lot. But initially, when I heard four units per acre, I was a little bit reluctant about it, but after hearing Mr. Blue, if he can give assurance, I would like to see the corner developed. It is kind of an eyesore. There's a lot of weeds, people dumping garbage, stuff like that. But my only concern would be, no matter how many homes go in there, is that double springs, I think, is the only way to get in and out of the planned subdivision, and it's going to increase traffic, you know, quite a bit. And also sellers, if you've ever driven that, it's an unsafe road. It's going to increase traffic on both of those roads, so what I want to do is just make a comment that I hope that that's addressed as well when you consider any of the subdivisions out in that area that are, you know, lying fallow right now and eventually are going to be probably, hopefully developed.
Okay.
That was all I really wanted to say.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Certainly. Anyone else?
I also just, we forgot to make one point. When the subdivision first was started, it was in the county, and so they were developing it without sewer, and it was going to be that way. And then it got annexed into the city, and then we, then we're forced to now have sewer. But, you know, so we got kind of caught in a no-man's land with the project, I mean, this project did, so I'd like to let you know that consideration too.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Bring it back to the commissioner Hoskins.
Question for staff. Just north of this property, there is a, an approved RPZD. Is that correct?
Yes, there is, I believe, Mr. Hos-
Expired.
Okay. But it was approved at one time. What was the, tell me about that? What was the density? What was it?
That project was called Amberwood. It was a kind of a low-density type of development. It showed kind of a conservation subdivision concept where they had units clustered close together in large areas of green space. So, the overall property was approximately 40 to 50 percent green space. It was a, I can't recall the density, not for sure, but it was not a high density.
Okay. Would you say, though, it was probably houses on smaller lots, though?
Yes. Yeah, they had houses on smaller lots that were clustered around conservation, kind of open green space and paths and natural trails and things like that throughout the neighborhood.
Okay. And this property's currently zoned R2 or R.05? R2. So, basically, it's two units per acre. Okay. And so, how many acres is this total project?
Thirty-four and a half, I think, isn't it?
Thirty-four and a half. So, by right, they can do 69 lots if they can figure out how to get them in there. Okay. And, so I'm kind of, is it, is it possible they could have come through with the R2 zoning but asked for a variance on lot frontage width, or not?
I think that would be, it would be possible, but it'd be very difficult to get the board of adjustment to approve some sort of a zoning variance for a whole neighborhood. There just wouldn't really be the hardship, I don't believe, to be able to grant those kinds of variances. I wouldn't recommend it.
Wouldn't be very unique, would it? And if it's going to be on 79 lots.
A board of adjustment variance, yes, for an isolated, unique piece of property. And if you wanted to plat a whole neighborhood with lots that were a certain lot size, you're really, in essence, rezoning the property.
Right.
They would need to do it. So, it's fine.
Okay. All right. I guess what I'm struggling with is that, that what the rub here is really just lot width. I mean, they can build dang near what they want. Their problem is the lot width minimums or whatever. So, as far as density goes, they can dang near build what they want with, we've already zoned it. If they're, hey, Buckley, I got a question for you. You said a second ago that you had, your intent was 2.25?
79 lots, yeah, and about two and a quarter per acre.
So, basically, what we're really talking about as far as density goes is the difference is like a quarter of a house, a quarter of a house per acre.
Sure.
Well, once you have the bill of assurance-
Assuming you did go ahead and present that bill of assurance that you were talking about-
Ten lots, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We don't need the density, it's just a lot width. And since we can't ask for a variance in this situation, we're kind of in a, in a middle area here, and since it's single family, we didn't want to do a RPZD, so.
Right. Mr. Chair, I'm struggling with it a little bit, as, as much as I respect and like to follow our future plan or whatever, it seems like they're not asking for much more than what they've already got, and their real issue is lot width as opposed to density. And so, I mean, I would tend to support the rezoning, but-
That might be a good statement or argument to make once we have the bill of assurance in front of us, and so when you can rely on that, and before, until we have that really, there can't be too much discussion about it because they can't make any decision on.
Well, that's, and I'm just going to go ahead and jump in right here, and I know you have a comment, Quinn. Because at this point, if we're just considering the rezone, we cannot consider a bill of assurance, anything like that. But in order to move this project forward, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty much in the same boat that Commissioner Hoskins is in, that I'm struggling with. I understand the need to move the project, but then I have to backpedal and look at it from a rezone on the front end.
He's just not ready to go right now.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. My only, my only comment was to remind the commission that this request is, and what you'll be voting on is a request to rezone to RSF4, not anything less.
Okay. I understand. Commissioner Cook?
So, Mike, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, is I'm not supportive of the RSF4 straight up. So, I mean, I, with that, I'm going to make a motion to table it till next meeting, give these guys an opportunity to come back and reassess what they're bringing to us.
And we're in total agreement with that. We'll come back with a bill of assurance.
That sounds like a good plan at this point, because I'd hate to stall this thing out again, guys, anything like that. Commissioner Winston, did you have a comment?
I had a question about the condition of the river along, the banks along there. It looked like there's some riprap down there, and others, a huge pile of topsoil, red dirt that's probably flowing into the river when it rains and stuff.
Sure.
And so, was wondering if development would have, if you'd be doing any restoration with the bank?
And we may. We're going to look, obviously, we have the streamside ordinance there that we're going to be working with, and we're going to have to make it presentable so the lots are sellable. So, when we get into the master grading plan and everything with the subdivision itself, the intent is to clean that up to the point where it's going to be bringing it back, you know, to more natural look with that, and clean up the riprap and where the storm's dumping into the creek itself, so.
Good. I'd like to see that.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Yeah. That's okay. I know we're not considering a rezone in terms of the, in terms of a possible bill of assurance right now, but I would like to ask staff, since it seems as if the applicant may be going to go seek a bill of assurance before they go to that trouble, if it's okay, I'd like to make a couple of comments and ask a question of staff. One is, Quinn, you made a couple of different comments, it seems to me. One was about, one seemed to maybe be about traffic, density due to traffic, but one seemed to be about the nature of the development surrounding this development and whether or not, how this might be incongruous with it. Does staff have any opinion on the effect of narrowing lot widths on this development in as much as how it would fit in with surrounding development at this time?
Yeah, I think what we'd like to see is that bill of assurance and what it does offer, and then review that against our findings that we have to make.
You need to think about it some before you can make that kind of decision.
Exactly. You know, ultimately, the future land use map and compatibility may not change. The compatibility seems a bit more, that could be, the future land use map is the future land use map. We would need, we would need that time to see that proposal and review it before we would have a recommendation for you.
Okay. And the other thing that I'll say is I'm not, if we go back to just traffic, well, actually, one, one thing I did want to clear up, and this is another staff comment, for the member of the public, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, any staff member or whoever wants to, traffic impacts would be considered during LSD, correct? So, we wouldn't discuss, that would not be considered during a rezone.
Yeah. They're, all of it, traffic's considered during every step in the process.
But I mean, possible addressing of that traffic impact by the applicant would only be, so, for example, if a light needed to be installed, if the street needed to be winding, street improvements would be assessed during LSD.
The detail, the detailed street improvements are not really evaluated at this, at this stage, but for a rezoning, we certainly did look at these streets and saw that they were substandard, and when you start getting higher densities, they would have to do some major improvements to both of these adjacent streets, potentially some offsite improvements as well. So, that's, that's one of the things to consider at a rezoning stage.
I, I understand that. My question is, is let's say it developed out as RSF2 right now, and LSD comes forth. Staff has some opinions that the street is not up to par. At that point, oh, I guess it'd be by right, there would not have to be an LSD, or there would?
It would be a preliminary plat, final plat.
Okay. So, there would be no road improvements done at that point?
Yeah, there would be.
There would be assessed. Okay. That's what I want, I wanted to make sure the member of public understood that we won't address that during a rezone process, but it will be addressed by staff before build out.
And there, there could be road improvements required-
Right.
-as long as it meets the constitutional test that-
Right.
...we're not exceeding the impact to our city infrastructure needs.
And I didn't mean to indicate that there necessarily would be, I just meant that this wouldn't be the time at which we would address that. Okay. I will say to the applicant, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm necessarily ready to go above RSF2, so you might want to take that, I mean, it may not matter to you, but I don't know, I know that you've probably got very close financials on this thing.
Sure, sure.
But it, I'm much more willing to look at Vulcan area restrictions, I understand that problem, than I am willing to consider raising the density, if that makes any sense. Your argument makes total sense to me in terms of your problem that you're having with lot width, so. That's all my comments, Mr. Chair. Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Cook. Is there any other comments? And I'll second that motion. Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Hoskins, do you have something to add? Nothing? Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Cook and a second from Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Gardner, please call the roll.
Ancho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. The next item up is administrative item 13-4602. Mr. Fulcher, may we have the staff report, please?
Absolutely. If you don't mind, I would, yeah, ask the city attorney if he could kind of go into the, really, the reason why staff worked on this, I think, and give us the good background information that we need.
Okay. I can, I request the staff to look at the planned zoning district. As you all probably are aware, a couple of years ago, or a year ago, we passed, the city council passed a planned zoning district that included development rights, which was appealed to court. And since it was a single decision made, it was confusing to the courts about whether it was a rezoning decision which would be examined by a clear and specific evidence rule that the city council was arbitrary and capricious, a very, very difficult standard to surpass, so that a challenge has never been successful since I've been city attorney here on a rezoning decision. Because to do that, it would have to be no rational basis for the rezoning, which is, usually, there's a rational basis and it's very easy to prove there is one. On the other hand, a development decision is a brand-new trial. It's as if you all said nothing. So, you go to trial and a jury who's never heard the, a development issue or zoning issue before, they sit just like they're a year, like they're the planning commissioner of the city council making the final decision, and who knows, they might not be from Fayetteville. They might all be from outside Fayetteville, so who knows? And they're the ones making the zoning decision or the, or the development decision. That would never happen in a pure zoning matter, but it could happen with a PZD because the judge in that particular case, who had just been appointed, is no longer judge, but he was there hearing the case, and he had made a determination that, in fact, it was going to be heard as all of it at once, including the zoning decision for the planned zoning district, was going to be heard basically as a brand-new trial, which made me nervous and concerned. In fact, I was, had prepared a writ of certiorari and prohibition, which I'd never filed before in all my, almost 40 years of practice, to the Supreme Court to say he couldn't do that. But it was unclear, and it was confusing, and it was dangerous. Eventually, of course, the university bought the property. I never got to send my motion away. We don't know what the Supreme Court would have said. But in order to ensure that never happens again, and that's not going to be the issue, and not to put the judge up there in a difficult decision about what to do, I asked the planning staff to divide the planned zoning district, so it was clearly, the PZD was a zoning decision only, not a development decision, and that there could be a preliminary plat or a large-scale development that would be going through at the same time with the planned zoning district in order to accomplish what their planned zoning district wanted to do with its zoning decision. And in that particular case, if that was challenged, the zoning decision would have, be entitled, the city council would be given great deference by the courts. It'd be the arbitrary and capricious standard, so it would be a very strong decision by the- the, by the city council, very unlikely to be reversed. And the development decision, which would be based upon the approved zoning decision, would also be very strong, because as long as they followed the rules set forth in the planned zoning district, it must be approved. For example, there could be a, a preliminary plat that comes through here that you all think stinks. But if they meet every one of our development criteria, it must be approved. And the jury would have to do this, would be instructed the same thing. They might not like it, but as long as it meets all development criteria, it must be approved, and therefore, by dividing the planned zoning district up into a zoning decision, and then a, a separate development decision, it makes your decisions and the city council's decisions much stronger, much less likely to be challenged and reversed. So that's why I requested the planning department to work on it. I didn't realize how complicated it was gonna be. I thought it'd be pretty simple, let's just divide it. But, uh, there's a lot more work to it, and one thing that we did, which is exceedingly strange for the government, we reduced a whole bunch of pages of, from the Unified Development Code that are just no longer there. They're gonna be, as Jesse will inform you, they're gonna be in the application process, really did not need to be part of the code anyway. And so we have, are suggesting a much shortening, uh, of the Unified Development Code, and for the specific ways that we're doing it, uh, that was just the background. I'll turn it over to Jesse to explain what we're actually proposing here.
Thank you, Kit. That background's really helpful. That was really the impetus for these changes. Our job was to go in there and try to pluck out the parts, or, or move around the parts between chapter one sixty-one and one sixty-six to, to accomplish Kit's goals in regards to the legality of the ordinance and the zoning and development decision. The, I think our long-term goal is that no one will ever notice, really, that we've made these changes. When it comes before a future planning commissioner, city council, or a public, or a development team, they won't really notice that these changes took place. The purpose of the PZD when it was adopted was to allow you to do something unique with a piece of property, as we've alluded to a little bit tonight, uh, to combine a development and zoning decision, so you don't have to just do the zoning, then turn around and come back through a whole nother process with a development application. You can combine those, and that the city council is more involved in that policy decision as they had not been with the planned unit development process that existed prior to the PZD process. That's still gonna be the case. The applicants are still gonna have the exact same choices in their application. They can do zoning and lane use, and come before the planning commission and get a recommendation on the zoning for their PZD that they've customized, and they're gonna go before the city council and have that final decision made. Or they're gonna do the zoning, lane use, and development application. They'll come before the planning commission, and they'll get a decision on their development application, so preliminary plat or large scale, as you normally would under independent application process, and the zoning decision will be forwarded on to the city council with your recommendation. So those things really aren't gonna change.
And the development decision will be contingent upon the city council approving the planned zoning district without major changes, because if they make major changes, they might have to come back and adjust their development proposal. Or if they turn down the planned zoning district zoning decision, then your development decision, which is contingent upon approval, will be null and void.
That's exactly correct. Um, kinda both decisions used to go forward to the city council, and were, as the ordinance had it, they were quite muddled up, and so it's hard to tell a zoning decision from a development decision, and that was really, the purpose here was to pull these apart. Ultimately, the city council, by denying, denying the zoning, is denying the development as well, or if they request modification to the zoning, so they say the density's too high, or the setbacks are too narrow, then those changes would have to come back to the, to the planning commission to have the, the development application modified. So there could be some back and forth with this process. Of course, that's really all, it always existed in the application process. I just wanna run through, uh, on page two, some of the major changes that we made. Again, the purpose was to divide the zoning and development, and so we've moved a number of things into chapter one sixty-one, which is the zoning chapter, and it limited most everything in chapter one sixty-six, uh, in the PZD section. Uh, and that was because we realized we couldn't just pull out what we wanted to, we really needed to make some major changes, and realized it's an opportunity to streamline and, and to get rid of a lot of the clutter that was in one sixty-six, as Kit mentioned. There were several pages in one sixty-six for the PZD ordinance that was instructions. It was pay a filing fee, turn in an application. Well, that's a part of any application, and it states it on every application that we hand to a, a property owner or developer. And so that's not something that needs to be repeated in the ordinance, it's certainly not repeated for any other development application. So it was an easy thing to get rid of, uh, and simply have the applicants refer to their requirements in the application process. Uh, we also had, uh, quite a bit of information on private streets. The only time you could do a private street was within the planned zoning district application. I can't really think of where that's been used, and really the reason is, because the requirement is to build a public street. It's the same standards. There's no cost savings in building a private street under a PZD, because it has to be built to the same standards, dimensional, depth and width as a public street. So there's no cost savings. All you're doing is, as a developer, is taking on the long-term responsibility of maintaining a street that you could simply dedicate to the city, and have the city and its resources maintain that street. Or the worst-case scenario is a group of property owners receive that, that maintenance responsibility in perpetuity, in which we've seen similar examples in the past where property owners are required to maintain certain items that seem to be more of an infrastructure nature, and are asking for the city to come along and provide some assistance, because ultimately, there's probably not the financial resources in a group of property owners to maintain something like a public street. Uh, it was our opinion that, that shouldn't be allowed, it shouldn't be an option, because of the challenges we've seen and would likely see in the future. This does not disallow private drives. Apartment complexes have private drives, all internal. Those are simply driveways. They do have street signs for nine-one-one purposes, uh, so that each of the buildings can be addressed independently. That will still exist. This is just actually building private streets under public standards. Uh, there was also quite a bit of information about covenants, trust, homeowner associations, and what the city required a, a POA to do, or a homeowner's association to do. The fact is, in no situation does the city get involved in private agreements. All of these are private agreements between the people that buy into the subdivision. Um, the city does not go in and enforce any of these regulations. We simply say we have no part in them. And this is, again, one section where we said we are involving ourselves in these types of private matters, and we, I think, all felt that that was not necessary, and so recommended that that, uh, section of the code be removed as well. And then, on modifications, there was, within the PZD ordinance, it allowed minor modifications and major modifications. And again, this blended the zoning standards. It allowed you to modify the density administratively, which is really a zoning standard. It allowed you to modify the development regulations to some degree, depending on if it was a major or minor modification. The UDC already covers all these situations. Um, if it's a development, if it's a modification to the developments of the number of parking spaces, the location of a building, the materials on a building, that's a minor or major modification, and the planning commission sees these, sees these all the time. If a Walmart is, is approved, and they wanna change all the materials on the building, well, they come back before the planning commission and ask for a modification. If they simply wanna change the paint color, they come to staff and they get approved for a minor modification, since we don't review paint color, uh, under the UDC regulations. If it's a zoning change, density setbacks, well, that's the board of adjustment. That's their purviews to modify the zoning regulations, and that's what the PZD is, is it's a customized zoning district, and that really falls into the board of adjustment purview. If they wanna change the setbacks for every lot in a subdivision, they're really changing the PZD. You need to go back before the city council and probably go through a new, uh, planned zoning district application of some sort. We felt that there are already, um, routes to go through that already exist in the UDC, and they don't need to be customized for a, a planned zoning district. For the, for the most part, there are, uh, ways to do that. And then, under revocation, the planning commission has seen a few times in the last couple of years where PZDs weren't built. The PZD zoning expired, and the property sits there, it has no development rights, which our city attorney's expressed concerns with. Each time he has an opportunity, we do not want property without development rights. Every property should have some type of development rights inherent to it. Uh, in no other situation does a zoning expire. If you request RSF two, your RSF two remains until the city council makes a policy decision to change that zoning. A PZD should be no different. If the city council makes a policy decision to allow customized zoning, then that should exist in perpetuity and should not be, should not expire. The applicant should always have the ability to go back and request a zoning change at any point, but the zoning should not expire on that property. Now, the development approval that was received with the PZD should expire. It does in all other situations. A large-scale, a preliminary plat, lot splits, most, any type of application will expire after one year unless they come back to the planning commission and request an extension, and under, uh, those guidelines, they have to meet the codes that are in place, just in case codes have changed. So again, there's already regulations written in for, uh, zoning to remain in place, or for a development application to expire. So again, we didn't feel that we should be looking at customized phasing timeframes, which we've got a number of those in existence under PZDs, where the phasing is very complicated. Essentially, what we're saying is the zoning's in place. Just because your large-scale expires doesn't mean your zoning does. So if you have a PZD, a very large one, like Forest Hills, it's eighty acres, how it would be processed is they'd get the zoning approval for their eighty acres, but what we ask them to do is process a large-scale for phase one, and don't process the development applications for the other seventy acres. Process a large-scale, which would've been like the neighborhood market and the infrastructure. They would've had their timeframe under the zoning code or under the UDC to develop the Walmart, to develop the infrastructure, and they can come back through with large scales, as they've done with the First Security Bank, with the retail developments, Planet Fitness. All those have come through as independent large scales. That's exactly how they would do it, but the concern right now is that at some point, some of these phases will expire, which could put their PZD in limbo, which is not what we wanna see. So we, again, trying to, uh, separate the zoning and development, review processes. We don't want them to expire. We want people to take small chunks of a PZD and process them under independent de- development applications, uh, as they think the project will go along. Those are the big develop, uh, the big amendments that we made. Tried to make the amendments clear in the markup and highlight sections, but there's a lot of changes, and so we're happy to discuss it. Table it, come back, and look at it in two weeks, whatever the planning commission's comfortable with. Just let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And seeing no public, I will bring it back to the commissioner.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, to Chesser.
Yep. Um, something's kinda been bugging me since agenda session, and I've kind of finally figured out what it is, and, Mr. Fulcher, I'd love it if you'd, you'd, uh, address it. Um, I, what Kit has said makes total sense to me, and I appreciate all y'all's work. Um, there's one issue that I wanna address that is not necessarily something that you could've anticipated, or maybe even could fix if you did, but I wanna know what you have to say about it. I've written PZDs, and one thing about the PZD process, which is arduous, but I think important, is that in granting a specialized zoning, um, to an applicant, it's usually tied to what I will call a particular look and feel, which is also very detailed for the development. So, my concern, and I think Mr. Williams really put it best, um, I'm gonna call it the bait and switch, whether it be intentional or unintentional, which is that if we grant a zoning, uh, and development rights, what is to stop the applicant from doing a completely different development as long as it meets those zoning requirements, and might not have what I'll call the look and feel that we were led to expect? In other words, we may hate it, we may think it stinks, as, as Mr. Williams said. At that point, we can't do it, we're, we're stuck with it, right? And, and this is the thing that also makes me a little nervous about granting a PZD in perpetuity. Um, I might rather see it revert to its previous zoning in order to fix that problem. Would you, can you address that? You may have, you may have addressed that in here, but I couldn't figure out if someone couldn't still do that. Maybe, maybe Kit wants to answer it, too, I don't know.
Well, I was gonna answer the first part and allow-
Go ahead.
-the zoning, uh, question to fall to Kit. I think what you're saying is, when a, when a project comes through, and I'll just keep using Forest Hills, 'cause we've all seen it recently, we're all familiar with it, uh, when it came through, it comes through as an entire project booklet. It has all the zoning standards, it has all the architectural standards, it has pre-preservation standards, parking standards, standard for signage, every standard that you would find for zoning and development regulations, all bundled up into a project booklet. That will still exist under this process. And so you won't be granting, uh, there won't be a zoning approval and a development approval that are somewhat disconnected from one another. I think they're still gonna have all the same standards put in place, so when you receive a, a large-scale request for the Planet Fitness, you would have all those zoning standards, all the architectural design standards written into the project booklet as well.
So that would be, that would carry with the zoning, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the architectural design standards will be part of the development standards, and then the zoning standards will be the zoning standards, but they're all gonna be tied to one another.
And I would have to say, not, not completely tied, because they have to be separate decisions. And, you know, uh, when you're considering just a normal zoning decision, uh, you can't say, "Well, I wanna see your houses." If you got an RSF four you're talking about here, and he has a little plat that shows only seventy-nine houses, um, that's not binding.
Right.
Okay? Without a bill of assurance to show it. Uh, it was to try to give more of a full picture, uh, to not only the city council, but also to the public, of what a development was gonna look like. Uh, that's one reason that, that the planned zoning district, uh, was able to go for it. I was nervous about it from day one, uh, because it sounds a little bit like contract zoning, which has not been either said, it's legal or not legal. Supreme Court has never had to decide it. They had a case where they said, "Well, we don't have to decide, we're not going to," until we have a case like that. Um, but you know, with other zoning decisions, I say you can't look at something they're just drawing on a piece of paper and, and showing it to you. So that, in a planned zoning district, they can bring concurrently a large-scale development or a preliminary plat if they want to. They don't have to. So-
Right.
And they get to the city council with a planned zoning district, if it's all by itself, it's kind of like a concept PZD, where it doesn't have all the details in there, and they're not really bound by anything but the zoning requirements. Uh, I really think that's probably what the law is, is that, you know, we, we can't require, we never required a PZD, because we couldn't require someone to show us exactly what they were gonna do. They did that in order to try to make their projects more appealing, and more convincing, and, and to get approval for them. Same reason people get bills of assurance, is to say, you know, "I want this zoning, but here, here's what I'm, you know, this is what I'll limit myself, if you give me that new rezoning." So it is correct. I would think many times, a planned zoning district's gonna come for it, and at the same time, they're gonna have a preliminary plat, that's going to receive conditional approval from this body, and then they will show both of that to the city council. And so the city council will have a pretty good idea of what is likely to be built there, but it's not gonna have the same, uh, force as the, as the original PZD did.
That's, and that's what I'm asking, and I am right in assuming that, even if they brought for, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm right in assuming that, even if they brought forward, um, preliminary plat, large-scale tied to it, if they chose not to build that large-scale after the PZD was granted, there's nothing we could do about it, correct?
Well, it's, that, that's true. They don't have to build anything. If they-
But they could build anything that complied with that PZD at that point.
That's right.
Whether it looked anything like that development they brought through or not, correct?
I think it would have to look pretty much like that, because you're gonna have, uh, the, the kind of conditions and rules and, and development criteria within the zoning district that will require a certain type of development. Now, it might not be identical, but I think it would look pretty close.
Okay. I guess I'm just advising caution, um, because I can, I can ima, I can envision a case in which if a PZD, I'm not sure exactly what all can be taken into account into the zoning, but I suspect that, for example, um, surface features of the building cannot. Can they, Jesse? I guess they-
Yeah.
Commercial design standards could be.
I would say my expectation, and, uh, may wanna speak with the city attorney some more, is, on a zoning and development application, the development standards are put in there. So again, going back to Forest Hills, they came back with a development five years after the zoning had been approved, uh, for Planet Fitness, and they said, "Look, our elevations don't match what you approved originally." And so we had that discussion. I did not foresee that changing whatsoever, if the zoning and development are tied together. But what I would have a question about is if it's just a zoning and land use, and we cannot, they are not required to show anything, then I think that's gonna bring up concern with a lot of people, that the zoning decision is being made without, which was the original basis, is we wanna see the project.
Right.
And if that can't be required, then I think that's gonna probably create some issues.
Well, and my suspicion is, is even if we can require it, let's say they go through, they get the approval- they get the approval, the way it's written now, they decide not to build it, but the zoning is perpetual, then someone else buys that project, then they can, they might build something that looks totally different than, I mean, not totally different, but significantly different. This is my concern. And for that reason, with that in mind, somebody may correct me, but I would be more comfortable tabling this at least for two weeks and ask staff to just examine that.
Before you do that, would you, Andrew Garner, a comment?
Yeah.
Sure.
This would not take away the commissioner or council's ability to look at the appearance of a development and the appearance of a building, the architectural styling, the placement of the buildings. So, that would still be embedded into the P Z D booklet that is presented. When you have the, you would still have the concept of how the development looks, where the buildings sit, and that's built into the zoning that you write into the property. And so, that can still be enforced. You know, when it comes back through as a development, it would still have to be consistent with the pictures and images that were presented, and that would still be required as part of the P Z D application. We're really talking about pulling out the raw development, you know, the site, the street improvements, you know, the off-site street improvements, all the real development details. We're separating that, but the overall concept and the picture is still a part of it. Yeah. So, we're not taking that away.
So, you're saying it would still have the same, close to the same force that the P Z Ds I'm used to had in the past, in terms of?
And I would say certainly it could. Now, someone could present a bare bones P Z D like they used to be able to, maybe a concept P Z D that would not have all of that criteria in there.
But we might not approve that.
They might have trouble getting that approved.
Okay. I yield the floor, and thank you for your forbearance, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Commissioner Hoskins?
Out of the tons of rezonings I've done, I can think of one that wasn't a P Z D. Staff has felt my pain on that, I'm sure. The P Z Ds came around before our form-based zoning came around. I'd be, I'm surprised if we would ever see a P Z D again, just to be honest with you. But we might, so here we are. From what I know about P Z Ds and everything you have to go through to get those approved, I think what staff is doing here is dead on the money. I cannot, I could never figure out why the zoning of a P Z D expired, when no other zoning in this town did expire. I never could figure that out. This is a good change. And as far as something coming back through, large-scale development or preliminary plat or what have you, you know, I can think of very few that came back through that didn't have some kind of hair on them, that we had to, "Well, that's not exactly like the P Z D or whatever, yet we've approved every single one of them." And so, like I said, I'd be surprised if we even saw any more P Z Ds now that we have the form-based zoning. And if you did see P Z, like if I was to present a P Z D today, it'd be chock full of areas with our form-based zoning in it. And so, and there's no other zoning, other than the commercial design standards and the residential design standards for multifamily or what have you, there's no other zoning that we have where we have to show, "Here's what it's going to look like," or what have you. And so, anyway, I don't see this as a problem. I'm ready to approve it tonight without a problem. I think staff's done a great job. I think they've moved the right direction on every bit of this. So, with that, if I can find my glasses, I will make a motion to approve.
Recommend approval?
Recommend approval. Hey, thanks, buddy. Administrative item 13 dash 4602, forwarded to the city council with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay. Before we take the, was there any other comments?
I just want to say my initial concerns for, along the lines of Chester's, my favorite thing about it is that the P Z Ds don't expire. And, you know, I've always just felt like people put so much work into these P Z Ds, and it just feels like something died on these pieces of property, you know? And I just, it's like, that, it just feels bad.
It creates a lot of extra work. We still have P Z Ds out there that have expired and are dead. Anytime the landowner comes back, we must rezone, because we can't leave a property out there the owner wants to develop, and we don't allow them to. And we've been, you know, the planning staff, when they get time, have been going and looking and presenting some rezoning requests, but we still haven't got all the old P Z Ds rejuvenated yet.
And a lot of the, I think a lot of the P Z Ds are, were more creative than the zoning that we need to lay on it, just so that the property gets some rights.
Can I ask a quick question?
Well, let's, Commissioner Cook.
Oh.
I was just going to say, I agree with Tracy. I don't think we'll ever see a P Z D again, honestly.
We haven't seen one in a long time, have we?
It's been a while. Project Cleveland.
That was the one that caused us problems.
Oops. That was all I wanted to say.
Commissioner Chester?
Does this affect existing dead P Z Ds or no? Okay.
What's dead is dead.
I do have one quick question.
Okay.
Along the lines of this dead P Z D question. How about the ones that are just got one foot in the grave? In other words, they're not quite dead, but they're getting real close. If this is approved by city council before those are expired, would those continue on?
I would think they would still be subject to the ordinance when they were adopted. I think they would still expire, probably. I mean, that's the first time I've thought of that. I don't know. I'd probably defer also to city attorneys.
You know, we might be able to put something in there.
I'd amend my motion.
But it's still now a unified decision that is dangerous and can be challenged pretty, with uncertain results, which I don't like. I like to have the decisions that you make and the city council make to be strong and easily upheld in court, so those might very well, I think, unless the city council changes this and puts some provisions in there, most laws are not retroactive. They have to be expressly made retroactive.
Okay.
Or they are not going to be considered to be applied retroactively.
Would you agree with me adding something to this to make it retroactive?
Only if we could also retroactively make them come back with a new preliminary plat or large-scale development. We might say that.
I'm talking about just the zoning portion, not the development.
We might say that upon their expiration, then would, only the development decision would expire. We might be able to put some language like that in there.
I'd like to amend my motion.
Please do.
How would, how could we write that, Andrew?
I'm not sure.
Maybe we could table it.
We, if you want to make that a suggestion, then we might have a proposal for the city council when it gets up there. That say, if you wanted to follow the planning commission's recommendation that the one, the planning, planned zoning districts, which are not expired but about to expire, would be saved by this new ordinance, then we can try to come up with some language that might be able to do that.
Just the zoning portion?
Only be the zoning portion.
Not the development portion. So, do I need to amend my motion, or you just pass the word along?
Why don't you pass the word along here?
Okay.
Well, you can make a, you can amend your, and make a recommendation to do that.
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion, then, to include a recommendation that any current P Z Ds, which are not expired, that this become retroactive on the zoning portion of those P Z Ds only, not the development portion.
Second. Any other comments?
That work for you guys? I don't know if I liked it. Uh-oh.
Let's talk about it.
There's always got to be one.
It wasn't the one I thought.
Hmm?
Commissioner Cook?
I don't know. I mean, because, how long does it take for they expire? I forgot. How long's the, three years?
It's three years.
Well, P Z Ds had their own customized phasing.
Well, I guess that's true. Mine's always three.
So, like South Pass, South Pass had like a 30-year phasing. Most of them were like one, two years. Some of them had different phases for different portions of it.
Some owners are more hopeful than others.
Well, how many are actually out there floating around still? There can't be very many.
I think that's, the issue is, at least from our standpoint, of what that rule would do to each P Z D. I think we'd have to look into, to see what that would do with a P Z D that hasn't expired and has timeframes.
My concern would be that it's not too difficult for an owner to come back and say, "You know what? I liked my P Z D. Pass it again." Or, "I didn't like it. I want to go to form-based zoning." And I would rather do that than try to go back retroactively and look at this and try to divide up the development rights from the zoning decision. And that, to me, sounds like it'd be too complicated to try to do issues about, "Well, mine just died. Why come I can't get the benefit of that?"
And, of course, I'm not willing to follow my sword over this, so.
Well, I see what you point on the zoning, because, I mean, we made a, at some points, the zoning decision was made based on the land, future land uses and all those zoning decisions that are made.
Mm-hmm.
And really, that shouldn't change over time unless, you know, the.
It shouldn't change without the city council changing it.
Yeah.
But I think that that's not the way it was adopted. And so, I still think it's not too onerous to have someone that has a P Z D out there that's about to expire to either come back and ask for a continuance or ask for just a, ask for a zoning exactly the way it was, if you liked it, but divide out the zoning decision from the development decision. I think I'd rather see it on a case-by-case basis, rather than try to make it uniform and a blanket sort of renewal.
And I'm going to go ahead and throw in, because I'm comfortable with the way that it's, the way that it's wrote. I think the staff has done an excellent job.
And I'll go back to my original motion. How about that?
That's fine with me, because that's the way that I read it, the way that I understood it. I didn't feel that it took any, any of the grit or whatever out of the, out of the way that the, the process works. I just felt like it was a cleaned-up version of, basically, and it funnels responsibility off to other departments that handle those things. I think the staff did a great job, so I'm very pleased with what I saw. And, you know, anything that reduces involvement by the government, I'm all about.
We're here to regulate.
Amen. Amen.
So, if there's a motion or a remotion or a.
I think he's got his first motion, and is that okay with the second, or?
Yes.
Okay.
We're to go to this.
All right.
Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Garner, we have a motion from Commissioner Hoskins and a second from Commissioner Autry, if you will. Please take, call the roll.
Honchel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Huskins?
Yes.
Chester?
I think staff did a great job, but because I'd like to look at it more, I'm going to vote no.
You can abstain.
Looks like the no.
No, I, I mean no.
Take your no.
All right.
Give us two no's.
Was that, did you?
It passed.
Okay.
Yeah, it passed.
I wasn't sure where it was. Okay. And the final item tonight.
I didn't even get to count that on my fingers.
Is a administrative item 13 dash 4635, U D C amendment, chapter 166.21, downtown design overlay district standards. Staff has requested that this item be tabled until the March 10th, 2014 meeting. Andrew has had, yeah, you had this one.
That's staff report.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Chester?
I move that we table administrative item 14 dash 4635 until the March 10th, 2014 planning commission meeting.
Second. Have a motion from Commissioner Chester and a second from Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Honchel?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Huskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That is it for the agenda. Thanks, Mr. Garner. Did you have?
I do have a couple of announcements. The chairman has appointed a nominating committee, Ron Autry, Porter Winston, and Tracy Hoskins to come up with a ballot for planning commission officers. So, I need to get with you guys. You guys will have to, usually we meet after agenda session, so hopefully, I've got it penciled in at March the 6th. That's your agenda session on March the 6th, to meet right after agenda, and you guys come up with a ballot. If you can't make it, let me know. We'll figure out a different time, but I'll coordinate with you guys. We also have a subdivision committee meeting this Thursday.
Team?
Team two, Winston, Autry, Bunch.
I've got one more now. Sorry.
Mr. Foulter?
Sit down for it. The historic district commission, the 2014 Historic Preservation Awards nomination timeline just had a press release today, so if there's historic project, buildings, projects that have been rehabilitations, or individuals involved with those projects that you would like to nominate, you may, all through the month of March. The deadline, I believe, is April 1st. You can get a nomination form online in our office, submit that to our office, and hopefully have some recognition for projects and individuals involved. Okay.
Are there application times, deadlines for planning commission?
It's Friday, I think.
Is that last Friday or this coming Friday?
I thought it was this past Friday.